Paul.
No, it's you.
Okay.
I'm with City Services.
Okay, what can I call them?
City Services Committee meeting, meeting in tandem with the Environmental Committee because we're talking about AEP and trees today.
And power.
Power and trees. And trees, all of them above. And so with no ado, we'd like to ask Mr. Buck if you'd like to speak on this presentation and then we'll...
You essentially can sit on a table or you can go to the podium. Okay.
Either or.
Okay, by the table.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm John Buck, AEP Ohio Community Affairs Manager. And we take great concern and are interested in answering questions that the council may have about our vegetation management, control, and reliability. And our folks are here tonight. We feel like we should be able to address most questions that you may have tonight. If I may, go ahead and introduce these folks. Starting left to right here, Rob Richardson's with Region Engineering. He's at the laptop. Don Stempel is the Account Engineer, and he's new in the city of Athens. He has the city of Athens as his account, takes the place of Terry Lloyd, who's just behind him. Tim Sifang, who is the Distribution Systems Manager. Steve Stanley, Vegetation Control or Forestry. Behind him is Milt Schaefer, who's worked with a lot of the folks uptown in Customer Services. Jeff Rennie, who is our CorpCom Consultant. Terry Lloyd, I mentioned him in the Planning and Engineering locally. Gary Hall and Robbie Shields. Bill Coy, who is the local Line Crew Supervisor, are all here. So we would like to present a, give a presentation on PowerPoint about the reliability and kind of flows, we feel like, one into the other. If you can accommodate us all at once, that would be great. If not, we understand and we'll stay until we need to. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and introduce and start the program to Tim.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to come and explain what we're doing.
Can you state your name again so our clerk can get it?
Yeah, Tim Sifang.
Okay.
And the reason we brought such a large contingency with us tonight is we hope to be able to answer your questions while we're here instead of having to go back and get an answer and come back. However, if you do ask something we don't have the answer to, that's what we'll do. So, well, if you could give me the first slide, please. This first slide kind of gives a representation of the 12 circuits that serve the Athens City. And when you look at, I'll explain what the slide's telling us. In the first column is the circuit name. The second column is the total number of customers served by each of those circuits. The third column tells the percentage of those customers that are inside the city of Athens. The next column, well, the next six columns, I believe, give us the causes for outages that have occurred on those circuits. And the next to the last column, 2006 SAFI, is SAFI is the way that we, it's a statistical way we keep track of the number of outages that have affected customers on those circuits. So for example, that top circuit up there where it says .88, that means that every customer on that circuit experienced .88 outages that year. Now, in reality, that means that some customers didn't have any outages and some customers probably had more than one outage, but on average, it's .88. So of course, the lower the number, the better. The higher the number, the more outages they would have experienced. And the last column we added was our estimation of the SAFI that would have been realized by customers that lived within the city of Athens because some of these circuits are pretty large and there are things that can happen outside of the city that would have affected customers outside of the city that might not have affected customers inside the city. Now, kind of going back to the outage causes, we have, we start off with equipment failure, scheduled outages, trees in right-of-way, that's what the R-2-W stands for, trees out of right-of-way, unknown, non-weather events, and weather events that include lightning. The way we looked at those is, you'll see it's a percentage, and we look at customer minutes as the way we kind of evaluate an outage. So for example, that's nothing more than the number of customers that were out times the number of minutes they were out. So for example, if it was one customer and they were out for 60 minutes, that would be 60 minutes of customer minutes of interruption. On the other hand, if it were two customers that were out for 60 minutes, that would be a 20 minutes of customer interruption. So it kind of gauges the magnitude based on the number of customers and how long they were out. So when you look down through there, you'll see that there's different percentages depending on what caused the outage. A good example is this, about the third one down, 22902, you'll see that 38% of the outages were caused by equipment failure and 46% were caused by a scheduled outage. Now, we know on that one, there was one outage that affected seven customers that lasted three hours and comes up to around 1,300 customer minutes, and that was 46% of the customer minutes of interruption on that circuit. And that particular outage was caused because we had to de-energize the certain, some of those facilities to set up a pole for a new customer. So that's kind of an explanation of what that slide is. Now, when you look down through there, the SAFI numbers, as you can see, some of them, when you just look at the, either the SAFI for the whole circuit or the SAFI for the city of Athens, some of those cir, oh, when you go down to the bottom where it says Athens District Indices, and you'll see 1.3, that is the SAFI for all of the circuits within the Athens District. And the Athens District goes from Lancaster to Point Pleasant, Wellston to Marietta. And 1.3 is the number. So as you can see, when you look down through there, some of those circuits perform better than the district average and some perform worse than the district average or had more outages. The last number down there, 1.48, that is the SAFI number for AEP Ohio, all the circuits in AEP Ohio. And this is, I failed to say, this is a 12-month period ending May 31st, 2006. And it's 1.48. So the circuits within the Athens District experienced slightly less outages than if you look at the state as a whole. Now, one of the things that I must note, if you look at the four circuits on the bottom, and those are the circuits served out of the Stroud Run Station, they are experiencing or have experienced a higher number of outages. And there are some things that we are doing about that, and I'll explain that as the program goes on. Are there any questions about that piece of...
The map over there represents all your circuits, is that what I'm talking, you're looking at? So when you're talking about that whole area, it's really encompassing, I'd say Point Pleasant upward to land.
Yeah, that particular map over there, and pardon me for not mentioning that, I forgot to do that.
No, that's okay.
That is the city of Athens and all the circuits that serve the city of Athens. The different colors represent different circuits.
Okay. And descent, equipment failure is quite high, I noticed, but that's usually within your lines, transformers, poles, and everything like that?
And again, when we, there's some things that we're doing about that that we'll share with you.
Okay.
And I think it's important to realize, we're not, I mean, we're not saying that we're satisfied with that level of performance. There are things that we have done and will do to make that better.
Okay. Carol?
Yes? For the purpose of these records, how do you define an outage?
An outage, I believe, is anything that lasts more than three minutes, five minutes.
Wow. Okay. So it's not the little interruptions that make the computer...
No, and we'll talk about, I'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
Because, I'll tell you, that's an issue, I've been with AEP for 20 years, and that has really changed over that period of time. Before, you had digital electronics and all that, you know? And the theory was, it's better to have the little, you know, 10-second interruption than the extended outage, but not everybody's so sure about that anymore.
But by the time you set the clock 12 times in a day, yeah, it's a little...
Yeah. We'll explain what causes that and what we might be able to do about that. Okay. This slide shows us the work that we have completed over the last two years on our facilities. And some of the things that are included in that work are, we completed a visual, or we completed an inspection and the repairs on six of those circuits that we were looking at just a second ago. And that is a program that we have, Circuit Inspection Repair, where we go out and visually look at everything on that circuit from end to end, identify the things that need to be fixed and repair those. We cleared 209 miles of right-of-way. Recloser, we replaced 37 reclosers. Now, what a recloser is, I'm kind of getting to your question, a recloser's kind of like a circuit breaker. It automatically detects a problem on a line and will open up and then close. In other words, it'll de-energize the line and re-energize the line. What we found, in a huge number of cases, 85, 90-plus percent, a problem with a power line is temporary. It's an animal or it's a tree that gets in it. And just by de-energizing the line and re-energizing the line, the problem will clear and you'll avoid the extended outage. However, you will have the annoyance of having to reset clocks and that sort of thing. And we have a program to replace reclosers. We replace all of our reclosers every five to seven years. Cutout replacement program, we replaced 28 cutouts in the last two years. And what that is, we have found out that there was a period of time in the mid-'90s, cutouts are fuses. There were one time, they see a problem, they blow, we have to come out and fix something. We have found that there was a period of time in the mid-'90s when there was cutouts that were manufactured then or failing prematurely. We have a program in place to identify those and replace them before they fail in service. And so 27 of them, we did over the last two years. And this is just on the circuits that serve the Athens area. Sectionalizing. What that is, that is a program we have to install protective devices like cutouts and reclosers. And we do that in order to minimize the number of customers that will be affected by an outage. And so within that program, we either installed or upgraded 88 reclosers or we installed or resized 172 cutouts. Animal mitigation. Essentially what that is, is we put an insulator around bare conductor that comes out of the top of the transformer. We found that animals can get in that and that causes an outage. And by putting these animal guards on, you can cut down on there quite a bit, so we've installed 70 animal guards. We replaced a station bus breaker disconnect switch. And what, that was an item in a station, Stroud Run actually, that was found on routine inspection to be defective. And we scheduled an outage, and that was right before Christmas last year. We actually did it at 1:00 in the morning. We did that in order to minimize the impact to the customers. And I don't know if some of you may remember that, it was kind of, we had a little bit of difficulty getting that scheduled because it turned out there was a post office on that circuit too that was sorting, 1:00 in the mornings when they sort mail. And it's not 1:00 in the morning, it wasn't going to work real well for them, but 2:00 in the afternoon was not going to work for craters or Walmart either. So we ended up finding a way to keep them in service while we did that. And a bus breaker disconnect switch, the purpose we have one, is that provides some flexibility. If there is a piece of equipment in the station that fails, we can feed the customers with another source by doing some switching, or if we have to take a piece of equipment out for maintenance. So that's why we have those in there. We upgraded, there's a transformer below the sidewalk on Court Street, in front of Taco Bell, and we upgraded that last year during Christmas break to make it, there was, load was increasing up there, and we replaced it with one big enough to carry the load that seems to be coming on there. We did 37,000 feet of reconductoring of main line, and that was done either because we identified it as deteriorated or to make increases to accommodate future load growth. We rebuilt six feeder breakers. And a feeder breaker is kind of like a recloser, only it's in a substation and it carries all the load and affects all the customers on that circuit. So it has to be capable of carrying and interrupting higher amounts of load. And then we also did some lightning mitigation. What that is, is that's the installation of lightning arrestors. And lightning arrestors protect our facilities in the event of a lightning strike. And overall, that work cost approximately $2.7 million. This year, we are working on, we have already replaced another station feeder breaker in Stroud Run. We are, we are in the process of completing visual inspections and repairs on five circuits. We plan to clear 56 miles of right-of-way. And we plan to replace 16 reclosers and 135 more cutouts. And then we also plan to do additional lightning mitigation. And we estimate that work will cost approximately $1.3 million. So that brings the total up to $4 million on the circuits. Is there any questions about any of that? Next, I want to talk a little bit about the series of events that occurred on North Court and State Street in May. And to start off with, kind of, this is a map of our facilities in the area. And I need to describe a little bit about what's up there, was up there when we started this, so this will make some sense. But this right here is the location of the transformer. It's three, it's actually up on a pole back in the alley that serves these customers in here. This line right here is what we've called primary line. And what that is, that's a 7,200-volt line that feeds the transformer. The transformer's purpose is to change the voltage from 7,200 volts down to 120, 240, or whatever the service voltage is for the customer of the business. This green line right here is a secondary line, and that's 120, 240, 120, 240 volts. And it just, it goes to the second pole here that serves these customers. We had a job to add a customer to that transformer by way of this piece of secondary in that pole right there. Our supervisor was up there, looking at the job, getting ready to do it, and he noticed that there was damage to this conductor. And so what he did is, he scheduled an outage to replace that conductor and add the customer for the next week, which we did. Two weeks went by and we had an outage up there. And when we went up to see what was wrong, the conductor looked damaged. And it's in an alley, we have that happen, trucks come by and end it, conductor, and it fails. And that's what it appeared to be when we looked at it. So we just repaired that secondary conductor. Well, the next day, it went out again, and we realized that it was overloaded. So we replaced that line with a bigger one, just a bigger secondary line, and we took load readings while we were there. And we realized that the load was quite a bit more than what we thought it was. So we started making plans to create additional capacity up there, more than you could do just by replacing the line. We were going to have to add a transformer and extend the primary, it was a more involved job. Before we could get the job done, it failed again. So we went up and installed a transformer at that location, extended the primary, and put everybody back into service. We took load readings again after we got that back in, and they were, those load readings were even higher than we got the week before. And as a matter of fact, it had pretty much doubled over the last year. So we're actually going to have to go back and replace this transformer again. And we've worked with the business owners up there, and I believe that's scheduled for July the 11th at about 4:00 in the morning, weather cooperating. Can I answer any questions about that?
So in terms of this surprising new load, is that just because increased business up there or you just notice that you don't know?
Well, we're going to, Don Stempel's going to get up and talk to you about some things that maybe we can do to improve that situation, but there is, in my estimation, a bit of a gap because under our current ways of operating, if nobody's changing anything on the outside and they're just adding load on the inside, there's no procedure in place to let us know about that. But I'm not saying we can't do anything about that because I believe we can. It's just the way we were operating before. Probably want to make some changes in order to capture that. Now, the other thing, I'll tell you too, we kind of changed our operating procedure as well with Bill Coy's help, that we were now, I mean, when we go up to repair something, we're going to get load readings while we're there the first time. You know, we probably could have caught this a little earlier had we done that. It was just, you know, something we really hadn't encountered before, and we did change our procedure now is we would take load readings the first time.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Yes.
How often do you do the load readings for areas that do have regular outages or...
Well, unless we're there, as far as, now, when I'm saying load readings, this would be where we'd actually have a meter and put it on the line and get that. And I mean, unless we were out there for a reason or we suspected a load increase, I don't think we have any periodic, where you just go out and grab load readings. However, I believe in the engineering side of things, they do periodically look at all of our circuits and make sure that the protection is adjusted properly and that the loading that we know about is, we're not overloading the main line facilities. This was a little bit different. This isn't a main line facility, it's just service to a particular group of customers.
Good question. When you say load reading, are you talking about amperage? Okay.
Yeah, the current's what burns it down.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I just wanted to show this machine measure.
Yeah.
And this particular transformer is the one that had actually caught on fire several times when it, this was the one that, where the fire department ended up getting called, it was just in this one location?
To my knowledge, I think, to my knowledge, was the, it was the conductor. Yeah, it was just, it was what, there's a secondary conductor in there that caught on fire.
When something like that happens, how unsafe is it, I guess is the question? I mean, you know, I know, Ed, we was talking about, you know, fire tactics and fireworks and flames coming out and everything like that. So wire dropping would be a problem, and I assume the pole catching a fire is a problem. But what about, you know, does transformers explode or what, do they melt or what?
Well, transformers typically don't explode. They're full of oil and they can catch on fire and, you know, and the oil can come down the pole when that happens. So I mean, what I would say to anybody is, you know, you would never go around anything like that. As a matter of fact, if the fire department is going to come and fight a fire on a pole, we need to be there to de-energize it. So you know, what we do is during a storm situation, we try, when people call in, we try to find out, is there a hazard? In other words, is there a wire down, is there something on fire, that sort of thing? And we would send somebody out to guard that if we had, till we could get a crew there to take care of it. I mean, this is during a major storm event of some sort. But it would be something that you would want, I mean, if you were to encounter something like that, you would want to keep people away from it.
So standard operating procedures, something like this happens, fire department comes, they call you, right? They have a straight line view?
Some, yeah, they do. And, but sometimes we hear from other people before that too. And so, you know, if somebody calls in, they can, like, even if you call our solution center, you have the opportunity, even if all of the operators are tied up and you've got to put in a number for this, number for that, there's a number, is there something of danger? You have that, and it notifies us that there's a hazard out there that we need to react to. Now, the first responders do have a direct access and have a special number they call to get in directly to the solution center, who in turn relays that information to us.
Is he finished?
I'm done.
You finished it with your...
Yeah, if there's no more questions.
Could you go back to the spreadsheet where you had the incidents and then show us just in general where the worst districts are, just in, like the...
On the map, you mean?
On the map, yeah. Relate the two to the map, would you, please?
I guess the Stroud Run Station.
Yeah, well, definitely, if you're looking at outages like we are here, it would be Stroud Run is substantially higher than the other ones.
So on the map, where is that, what areas are being affected?
Okay, let's see. This is the Stroud Run Station, which is on Stroud Run. And, uh, the purple, the yellow, this all red, and this blue. So these areas here. This shows you the location of the North Court and State Street.
There you go. Okay.
So in other words, the impression that Jim had that the east side has issues falls in this category, is that what he's saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, and believe me, we are not here to tell you that we're satisfied with that performance. I mean, we're here to tell you that we know that there are problems and we're sharing with you the things that we have done and the things we're planning to do to make that better.
And just for the record, it wasn't in the paint for last week, but when I made that comment, I also said that we had received a notification from AEP that you recognized that there were problems and you were taking steps to...
That letter was probably from me. And we had, when the breaker problem happened that we replaced out at Stroud Run, it misopered. And we knew there was a problem with it, and we knew we had to replace it, and we suspected it was going to take an outage to get that done. So we wanted people to know about that upfront.
So in addition to that, could you show us where 03 and 04 are?
Stroud Run.
Uh, 22903, 22904.
Okay, now, that's on a clock station.
Okay. Do they look like they're above the average also?
This is three, 22903, which is a clock, third circuit on a clock.
20% of customers.
Four down here.
Okay. And where's the university in all of this?
Out in the middle.
Right, which one though?
Right. University is basically right in there.
Okay.
Their service is sub-transmission. Yeah, they're not on one of those circuits. They have, they take their service, their transmission customer. So they're not through our substations.
I was just interested in the number of customers in the city, and I was thinking about the dorms and how it related, that was all.
Yeah, actually, they look like one customer.
One big customer.
One big customer, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, if it's okay with you, I was going to have Steve Stanley come up and discuss the vegetation management issues.
Okay. You'll have some questions then?
Yeah.
Trees.
Trees, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Stanley, and I'm the forester for the Athens area for American Electric Power. I'm here tonight to give an overview of our goals and some of our practices in the forestry, vegetation management side of our business. Our number-one goal is to provide safety and reliable power to our customers and to our employees. And a part of that safety is to cut trees or trim trees on our right-of-ways, control the vegetation. And a part of that program involves quite a process with contacting the customers, evaluating the circuits to see what circuits need to be trimmed, which could entail book patrols or the data that Tim had showed, that showed, showed the SAFI numbers. It, that data that line servicemen collect goes hand-in-hand with that data that comes to us. with that data that comes to us, and we review that data and it will show us what circuits are having problems with vegetation potentially, whether it's an outer rightaway tree or in rightaway tree, we can look at that and say, well, it looks like we've got some problems here. So, at that point, we collectively make contact with our contractor and say, let's go patrol this circuit to see what the vegetation looks like on this circuit. As we do that, we come up with a plan to start a trim cycle. At that time, we contacted customers and either, either personal contact or with a yellow door hanger, which I just happened to have here, and leave a description of what work needs to be done on that property with a contact number. If the customer has issues with what work we plan to do, they can get ahold of us and we can set up a time and meet. If, if we do not hear from the customer, two weeks to a month, we have crews on site to do the work. Whether, whether it be removals or trims, we have a, a sort of a paint scheme as to how we mark the trees, whether it's a removal or a trim, we have work planners that go out and they mark the trees blue for a trim and red for a removal, it's a little dot about the size of a fifty cent piece, and at that point, the crews know when they get out there to cut, what trees they're cutting, what trees they're trimming. And also along those lines, you know, we, we try to make contact with the tree commissions if the city or village has a commission, which Athens does, and, and I work with Alvy McWilliams on the tree commission to rectify some of the issues there. Also, we work with them to, to give presentations to the area association, neighborhood association groups, and I've, I've worked with the, the east side and the west side, and, if anybody's got any questions.
Okay, I guess the questions I would have is, I, this first I heard of those tags, so you leave the tags on everybody's, whether on the rightaway or not, or?
No, everybody's, everybody's, we leave the tags on everybody's that we can tell that it affects. If, if electric's right in front of a house, we obviously, it's kind of a rule of thumb that it's probably their property or a rental property. Now, if it's a rental property, you know, the renter, I guess it's their responsibility to kinda take this, take this to the landlord and say, we've got this from American Electric Power, you might wanna call them.
If, I, one of the complaints I'm basically most of the time hearing is the, the asymmetry of the trees or how badly they're damaged, if, if you, if you have, say, there's a, let's say you wanna trim it and they say, well, that's, you're gonna really damage it, do you give them the option for removal as well, or?
Sure.
Okay, and there's a discussion that goes on like this?
Yeah, removals, right under the facilities, if we can get a removal, that's, that's our number one choice, obviously, because we don't have to trim it anymore, but we do trim trees, sometimes they're not real pretty, but we, we need to get the clearance from the electric lines as a safety issue.
I'm a novice, I'm just new to tree commission, I'm aware there's standards for arborists, or is that, what's followed by?
Yeah, there's an ANSI standard that, that we use, I won't say a hundred percent, but we try to use it as close as we can, the ANSI standard. It basically, it says if a tree is underneath the utility line, first option should be removed. Second, second option says that you dexterly prune it and basically what you're doing is trimming that tree. Any branch that's growing towards the wire, you're eliminating that branch, and you make specific cuts on that tree to eliminate that branch from growing back. The tree will heal itself over and basically make the tree grow like this.
Okay.
And the decisions are made on the ground by whoever happens to be running the chainsaw, right? You don't have a plan for each individual tree?
Right, yeah, we don't have a plan for each individual tree. Now, if we meet with a customer and look at it beforehand, we can point out to the customer basically what we're gonna do.
You mean, you have that much confidence in your contractors?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many contractors do you have?
Well, system wide-
Well, within the environment?
Just in our area, we don't care about this.
Within Athens, we've got ten tree crews, and some of those tree crews could be mowers or we've got a machine called a giraffe, it's like a big log skidder with a boom on it, it's got a blade, but it's more for royal, but in town, we have obviously bucket, bucket crews.
Other questions, do you, do you pick up the debris I sent?
We chip the brush, any wood that we can't chip, we stack right at the base of the tree, and a lot of times, that wood's gone before we're off the property because firewood, if, if the customer, you know, lets you have it or maybe the customer will burn it or whatever.
Okay, again, the majority of our city is, is rental, so therefore, we don't, I suspect we don't hear that much in terms of this stuff being done, but I do hear a lot about the, the conditions of trees. That's one of the things I feel there's a lot, not that, just being near the tree commission, it's not the tree commission that I hear from, it's, it's because I'm on city council and they say, can't you do something, or what's going on?
We do that a lot.
And, and so that's really what you're hearing is from thirty percent of people actually care about trees, or thirty percent of the homeowners that may or may not care about the trees. And, and that's the problem I'm having, I was not aware that you even tried contacting them, I was not aware that these tickets existed, and that's the first time I've seen one, which was kinda surprising because I was, I would have figured that anybody who's complained to me would be, be aware of it somehow, and I, I think that would be the next question I'll ask next time I get a complaint, where you contacted, because I wasn't aware this was a system that you have, procedure that you had in place. I know that we just passed, Mr. Buck there, the ANSI information there, it's given by Alvy. I know that also that we have an ordinance that goes to 2011, giving you the right to do this trimming, but again, there's, there's a lot of, I, I would like to see more contact with the people and make sure they do, are aware of the implication of what's going down. I, I did take a few pictures of various neighborhood things in, in the area, I'll submit them to you so you can have funds.
And then we're all through with all of the presentations and the citizens may be asking questions, will be asking questions.
I see some members of the tree commission who are just jumping up and down their seats.
And I know that it's been mentioned in a couple of the neighborhood association meetings that the company that you contract with to do the pruning in other parts of the country gets awards for doing really wonderful pruning, so people have expressed the notion that it could be done better than what you're seeing in the pictures there.
Well, if, if you look at some of the ANSI standards, some of these pictures I see kinda coincide with what they, they recommend doing, and, and I know, I know it looks ugly, but we are, I mean, it is a hazard, trees are a hazard if it contacts a power line because you have fire, if, if, if the electric line would happen to burn the tree into, then you get the potential for that tree to fall and it hits somebody on the ground, so, you know, I like trees, everybody in my company that I know like trees, we have trees on our properties, you know, we're not, we just don't go out and, and haphazardly start cutting trees, and, and I'm sure you guys understand that.
I think some of the considerations I'm hearing is that, in some of those pictures, for instance, on East State Street, some of the trees have been pruned very asymmetrically, so therefore, they actually present a new hazard being that they're now leaning towards the house. I mean, it's, it's okay for the wires, but it, it now imposes another cost to the, the owner. Some of the other ones, there's a whole slew of pines that have been topped, and I know somebody on, I think, second, you know, finished the job, it's because it kinda damages the pines. There's some on Franklin, the reason why I was asking about the debris, is I noticed there's a walkway on between Fairview and Grove, Grosvenor I guess it is, and that has-
Steps.
Steps, yeah, there's quite a bit of debris there on the sides, I, it's, you know, the weeds are growing between, you can see it, but it will present a hazard. Only if it dries up, well, it depends on the season.
How much rain will it have?
Yeah, how much rain will it have. So, you know, again, I, I just have to field these things, well, somebody drags me over down, down the block and says, look what happened here.
Look at this, is this under or what?
And short of telling them to, you know, to call you guys up, and they try, and as I say, they, at first I've heard of a contact and a, and a yellow tag, so that, that's news to me and I don't know why it's not news to them, you know.
Yeah, I, I think the situation you're talking about on Grosvenor, that, I guess I should explain myself a little more when I say we chip all the brush, if it's, if it's in a location where we can get to the brush, we'll, we'll chip, but if it's in a location like around Grosvenor where it's a wooded area, we, we do typically not chip that brush.
Okay. One of the other questions I have is how often do you contact the tree commission? I mean, are you, you say you're working with them, we have monthly meetings, I've been to only five of them since I knew I'm a commission, but at the same time-
I try to contact them when we come up, when we have a situation, come up in town where I think they should be contacted, I know here recently, we, we had some trees that were on a city property that we would like to get rid of, and, you know, I got ahold of Alvy and she worked great with us, I appreciate that, Alvy, and we got the trees removed and, and we got the wood taken care of by a local guy that burned firewood, and, you know, we try to, we try to work as close as we can with them, I mean, we're, we're in this city, we're in Lancaster, we're in, we're in a lot of villages and cities around southeastern Ohio, so.
I also always know that it's tree trimming time because the phone rings more than any other time of the year and some people are very angry. I, I will agree that they, the people I talk to all have gotten the notices and in many cases have spoken to someone, but then, they wanna be there on site when the crew comes and they don't always know when it's going to be and, and suddenly they're there and they're doing more than they had said, and that seems to be the scenario that upsets people more than anything else. I mean, I've got some folks that I've talked to that are just very conscientious about their trees and their properties and their gardens, and they do call and talk about it, but then if they're not right there when it happens, it happens differently than they anticipate, and, and what you're describing explains that a little bit, but is there anything we can do about that? And I, I applaud Debbie's suggestion that you do something so that the city is saying to you, oh, thank you for doing such a wonderful, attractive job of trimming the trees, and we do a resolution saying thank you for your wonderful tree trimming.
Well, unfortunately, the nature of our business is, things happen, storms come up, we have to move tree crews wherever, and, and a lot of time that happens. You know, in those instances where customers wanna be there, we usually try to accommodate them and get phone numbers and call them, if, if we don't get ahold of them, chances are we go ahead and do the work.
Right.
And, you know, because that crew shows up at a location, it, it's costing us money, you know, to be there, so.
And they do notify the homeowner of a specific time and then they, they are there at that specific time?
Yes, and like I said, if we, if we're not gonna be there, we'll call if, if we have an appointment set up. And, and there, again, I mean, when we get on site, the property owner, they still have to understand that we have to get our clearance. I mean, a lot of them will point and say, well, cut that branch there, but don't cut that, well, unfortunately, we can't do that, a lot of times we'll have to, you know, we take, take more to get our clearance from the wires, or, and if we didn't do that, we would be back every year. I mean, and I don't think, I don't think we wanna do that, to be back every year.
At the same time, there is a monetary cost when somebody loses a tree or loses the shape of a tree in front of the house, I mean, this is a house that would look a certain way and all of a sudden, you know, whether it's symmetry of trees or whatever, you know, this is, this is a financial impact to some members, or aesthetic for that matter, but at the same time, you do, you are affecting homeowners in that sense. I'm, I'm glad that you have a ticket system and a tag system to contact them, it'd be nice to make sure that the homeowner is on site and make sure that you have, you know, due diligence in getting them there or making sure that they coordinate the time. I don't, how, how much more presentation do you have, do you have other things to present?
Do other people have things to say?
Well, that's the other thing, yeah, does anybody else, since it is committee, committee time, we have members of the audience who might wanna speak as well as tree commission members, so would you like to field questions or would you like to hear what they have to say? Who wants to go first?
And this is for either of the-
Issues.
Either of the issues.
Power in or trees out? Okay, David?
I'll go up to the-
Yeah, or sit down there, whichever you choose. Not switch on a hot seat, but-
You're on the front.
David Ingram, 120 Morris Avenue, I'm a member of the tree commission, also a member of the executive of the Near East Side Labor Association, so I get it from two sides. And going back to one of the earlier things that AEP mentioned, I'm surprised at a company that's billing customers for power doesn't know how much power those customers are using, but maybe that's because I'm a physicist and I can think in conservation terms and these things have to add up eventually.
Well, they do.
You've got a database of customers, you've got a database of loads, I mean, anyway, I'm here to talk really about trees, and the thing I just passed to Paul at the end letter pass around is the page from the Wall Street Journal from last year in which 105 utilities were commended by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the work that they've done in proving trees and looking after the trees around utility lines, because we do recognize as a tree commission that it is important to maintain the power supply, I mean, that's clearly a critical issue, but we, as Paul was saying, hear from many people who do not like the way that these large shade trees, which are in the wrong place, they shouldn't be there, are being pruned, that we would much prefer, and I think many of the people who have these trees would much prefer AEP to take a stronger position when it comes to trying to get these trees replaced with smaller, more appropriate trees for these, these places. Because the tree commission, we, we look at that whenever we get a development plan come in and we see those high voltage cables there, we will try and make sure that that property owner then puts in trees that are appropriate for those sites, and I think they could, they could possibly do a little bit more to get that done. Askland is their primary contractor, I've seen them working in the city, they work extremely quickly, I'm sure they're very efficient, but I don't think aesthetics comes into their training. Now, it surprises me that some of the things that you see being done with these trees, topping, which this article notes is one of the worst things you can do to many of these trees, that really isn't within the, I, I think, within the scope of the ANSI standard to go doing that, to some of these very large trees, it just, it's gonna kill them eventually, it's much better to have them replaced. I think that's all I would say this time, thanks.
So, I, I see AEP has Oklahoma, Texas, 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 and Ohio.
I'd like to see Ohio next year.
Anybody else which is free? Alvy?
My name is Alvy McWilliams, I'm the chair of the Athens Shade Tree Commission, and it is true that we have a, a pretty good- And it is true that we have a pretty good project-related relationship with Steve Stanley when things come up, and most recently that we had a wonderful initiative by Steve for replacement of trees that were in the city right of way and which would have gotten up in power lines, and we had better trees bought by AEP to replace the things that were taken out. And this is the kind of initiative that the tree commission is hoping we might see more of, that this is, the problem is, there really are a lot of trees, the wrong tree in the wrong place. And what we see happening are repeated toppings of trees, toppings are not in the ANSI standards. And when trees that want to be 100 feet or 45, 50 feet tall are under power lines, this is going to happen over and over again. And we have, because it's an old town, we have a lot of really big trees in the wrong place. They were there before the power lines in many cases. And we've had repeated toppings of silver maples, for instance. And I think that the Asplund crews have even come across silver maples that they thought perhaps might pose hazards as they were doing their pruning or topping. This would be an opportunity to get communication about a tree from people who are right there looking at it and who are perhaps compounding the problem by that kind of work. We need some better communication in that kind of a situation. We have passed out, shared with you the ANSI standards, and Steve's right about the focus of these standards and the, this is a wonderfully succinct document. It is the American National Standards Institute A300 document, Standard Practices for Tree Shrubs and Other Woody Plant Maintenance. And it calls for basically a minimum number of cuts to occur to respect the shape of a tree. And when pruning occurs, that it should be a cut that goes all the way back to the collar for the most part, that there aren't stub cuts. And many of the complaints you're getting are about not respecting the shape of the tree, about cutting and leaving a stub, a stump, so that there's a branch that's simply sticking out and leaving an opportunity for disease and decay to occur. And in truth, in the radical shearing, where you go all the way back to the trunk, is almost a better ANSI observation, except that it doesn't observe the shape of the tree, it doesn't respect the shape of the tree. And cutting out the centers of trees, which has indeed occurred on East State Street, I think someplace around 160 East State, close to Verona, there is what looks to be a maple that's had the center of it just removed, and that's not a healthy thing. So, those kinds of trees, probably we need to have some kind of better communication with the city. These are all rights-of-way trees, I believe, about trees that ought to be assessed as some sort of a replacement program. What's happening is long-term maintenance is being created for the city, potential hazards are being created for the city by treating trees in this fashion. It would be a simple approach to have ANSI standards be a requirement for pruning. And I think that, I know there are efforts, that you may very much want to do this, but I don't think we've got that in language currently. It would be easiest simply to say, if we draft some sort of resolution, that we would very much, that we want to have work to be done in compliance with these A300 tree care standards, so that we no longer have this kind of damage to the trees.
Okay, so you're actually implying that it'd be better to actually remove most of these trees and...
The ones that are repeatedly topped, yes. And in the case of absolutely radical prunings, defacing and possibly destabilizing. Yeah.
Okay. Steve? Well, yeah, well, the alternative. Steve, so can I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
One of the first things is how often do you actually get contacted by the people you leave the tags for? I mean, how many times do you put a tag out and you don't get a feedback or you get feedback?
I've come to one of them.
I've come to a mic so people can hear you too. Get on the spot here.
I would say for the city of Athens, we're contacted probably 50% of the time, I would say.
And when you tell them that this tree has to be trimmed, do you actually just explain what has to be done, or do you recommend that should be, you know, according to what Alvy's saying? Again, I'm on the tree commission, so I'm learning this right now, because I'm new to this thing. Would you actually, most of the time, recommend that they take it off entirely? I mean, you've come up and said, you know, "We're going to have to take off this side right here," and, you know, do you have a choice of getting a little tree or no tree whatsoever, or...
Yeah, we assess the tree, and usually any tree that's underneath the electric line, we try to push, yes, for removal. If it's off to the side just a bit, and it's going to be a radical cut, as Alvy stated, we'll try to get that one removed too.
Okay, and so usually they, I assume that they don't take it well, or do they...
Yeah, usually, yeah, it's not good. Now, I mean, sometimes you have a, you have a good case, because maybe the tree's got a lot of disease in it, a lot of dead limbs and things like that, but healthier trees, or what seem to be healthier trees, you know, it's hard for people to say, "Yeah, go ahead and cut it in." But in the truth, if it's been cut for years and years and years, it may have a big hole that you can't see from the ground. I mean, it may be full of water, so...
Okay. Okay, thanks. Anybody else who should speak? Leslie?
On either topic?
On either topic, I assume this is...
Well, I could talk about trees, but...
See if it's Casa, or some power.
Power, power.
Well, I guess I'm one of those troublesome customers who have been concerned about the recent power outages. Leslie Schaller, representing Casa Nuova at Four West State Street. I would like to thank the gentleman from AEP for this presentation. That was the best information I've received as a commercial business owner. But I'm wondering if you could make some recommendations or suggestions to particularly commercial users. I think our experience has been that as we've done expansions to our property over the last 20 years, we recognize that the load is increasing. And obviously, when we do major renovations, we try and build in excess capacity, because we know we'll be adding more equipment, more computers. Are there recommendations that you would have to a commercial customer like ourselves that would be better to inform what we perceive our usage to be, so that we could avoid some of these power outages?
Yes.
Can you come up through the mic so other commercial users know?
Well, actually, this might be a good segue into Don's discussion. Because that is one-fourth of what we wanted to talk about this evening, was coming up with maybe some things we could do to close that gap. Because we agree with you, there is some opportunities here, as we learned by this experience. Because when we took our load readings and discovered that the load was twice or had doubled in the last year, we were shocked. And, you know, maybe we would have done two outages instead of three, if we would have known that. So, we think that, I don't really have the answer, but I think that we're willing to sit down with people and try to figure something out.
Okay, you have another presentation then?
Just, Don Stempel's going to come up and go.
Okay. Lorraine, do you want to cover something?
Did we finish up on trees?
Sounds like we're getting there.
We're doing both.
We're doing both. Do you want to cover, wait for...
I'd like to talk to the trees.
Okay, we're going to hear about trees. One more.
My name's Lorraine McCosker. I'm a resident at 59 Elmwood. And this year, when they were doing tree trimming, I happened to be home that day and worked in the neighborhood with Mr. Stanley. And I feel like the input that I had on that day assisted in minimizing the cugging that happened. I saw that with a resident or a consumer there advocating for the tree, we had a good result. I'd also like to indicate that trees are really important in our environment. They act to sequester carbon, and right now, we're having a global warming crisis. They also act to cool and warm our homes. So, when we remove these trees in front of our houses, our electricity bills go up. So, it's sort of a catch-22 for the consumer, as well as, I would imagine, AEP. I agree that many of the trees in Athens are inappropriately placed, and we have an urban forest that is compromised. It's old, a lot of the trees are in very poor condition. But we also have a very minimal amount of money to replace that and to take care of the trees. And this is very critical, and it's just very critical. Many cities and communities around the country have those resources, and we don't. And they recognize the importance of having a city arborist, but also people who are certified, I don't think that this would happen in communities where it was demanded that we have a certified arborist on site when the trimming is happening. So, I would like to make some recommendations as a citizen. I think that it would be highly advantageous if AEP was required to have a certified arborist on site when trees are trimmed and cut. All tree surgeons should be trained, and I think that there is a lack of that with the people who are currently doing the trimming. I think AEP could replace damaged or seriously injured trees. When trees are cut around homes, energy increases wise, I said that. I think communities, especially in southeast Ohio, we have these forests, but our urban trees are greatly compromised. We have a history of coming in, we cut everything down, and we built houses. And we really don't have this real strong, healthy urban forest that's going to maintain our community. I propose that the supervisor and certified arborist meet with representatives of the neighborhoods to discuss their tree trimming and removal plans, so that there can be an evaluation and representation by landowners. So, I think oftentimes, people don't get those little things on the door, and if we have 72% of the houses in Athens rented, it seems sort of ludicrous to just pop it on the door, assuming that a student is going to provide that information to their landlord. It just isn't going to happen. I'd also like to encourage AEP to provide education to consumers about the importance of trees. So, I think that my concern is, I think that there's this cavalier attitude about the trees, that they're in the way, they're in the way of the lines, and therefore, we don't need them there. And I think that they do provide a very important role in the aesthetics of our community. There's been research about how communities are safer and have less violence when they have trees, and it's just, and have more of a community. And I think you can look at that. Anybody in the whole town would say Elmwood is a beautiful street. Well, there are nice homes on it, but I think it's because of the trees. And I think we could make every street beautiful with trees. So, I'd like AEP to address it. I think some of the savage cutting that took place is totally inappropriate. When you take a huge 100-foot tree on East State Street and cut off half of it, so it's bending over towards this 1920 home, what are they going to choose to do? They're going to choose to cut it down.
Thank you. Do you want to answer any of that, or... Briefly, I know you have another presentation too.
As far as replacement tree program, one of the questions you asked there, we can set up some kind of a replacement tree, although, I mean, it won't be a big tree, it'll be just a, you know, a sapling, but, I mean, it'll be a start, and, you know, we could find a place to, a good place to put it, and we could, we have that opportunity to do that.
I assume if you're going to put it in the same place, it'd be an appropriate tree, it wouldn't grow tall, is that what you're thinking?
Exactly, yes. Yeah, if you're going to put it under the line, you definitely need to get the right tree for the right place. As far as the arborist, Asplund does have arborists. I am not an arborist currently at this time, although I am a member of the ISA, International Society of Arborists. I attend a lot of meetings and presentations that they present. Columbus, West Virginia, I've been to St. Louis for their international meeting. Us foresters take pride in getting the job done and trying to take the trees' well-being in consideration. And there again, we need to get our clearance from the power lines, obviously, but we do take pride in making sure that we take care of the trees.
I assume Alvy has your email address, in case we want to... Maybe we'll start sending you more stuff. Actually, the idea I'm thinking is that we should forward the agenda to you regularly with the tree commission.
Sure.
Just so you know what's going on in town. Most of it does not cover power line stuff, but it does cover placements of trees, replacement of trees, and cuttings of trees. So therefore, it may be more than you need to know, but at the same time, just so we have a better communication.
Yeah, Alvy has, I've talked to her several times on the phone, and she's mentioned the meetings, and I haven't been able to attend, but I would like to...
Just so you know the agenda, I think.
Okay, thanks.
I like the idea of working on a replacement tree program. If you could work with the tree commission to come up with something that you both agree on, I think that it would be a really positive way to approach this.
Could end up with awards.
Yeah, for a while.
Thank you. Okay, you have one more presentation, or you want to start then?
Very short. Once again, my name's Don Stempel. I'm a customer service engineer, and one of my customers is the city of Athens, and I'm new to AEP, as John had mentioned, but taking over the account from Terry Lloyd, who's done a fine job of all the customers. I'm going to be taking over the accounts. I'm, I worked for Allegheny Power for 23 years, and I'm located in Marietta and taking some of this territory, because it's more convenient. But anyway, it sounds like to me that the problems that, as I understand, the situation here, a lot of it's communication is what's going on. The reliability situation, I think that all stems from communication of loads. And I know one gentleman asked about the, "Why can't you find that out from the electric bill?" Well, on residential customers, they don't have what they call demand meters that register load, they just register kilowatt hours. You don't know if that's all coming in at one time, or if that's spread out, so there's no really way to know from electric bill what's going on with an increase in load. So, what we depend on is customers to notify us of when they increase load, and sometimes, for new businesses on the circuit, you know, we'll know that because we have to put facilities in. But if a customer, if they would have put in a large, I guess, equipment, electric equipment, when they built a house, enough capacity, they could add load without having to contact us. And that does create a problem. Now, when we install our facilities, we install that with some capacity reservation, but it may not be matched what the customer has put in on their end. So, I think that's what happened on this end, that the customer had passed there, and the customer... and the customers within those units added load and ended up overloading our facilities. And being around this business for 23 years, I can tell you that that's not the first time a lack of communication has, has happened. In other cities, there's things in place that can help with that communication, and what we would like to do is maybe sit down with some people from the city of Athens and, and see if there's a better way that maybe the city can be involved with that communication process to keep these type of reliability situations from happening. And it sounds like same thing with the, with the trees, it sounds like it's all communication there as well, but I know that we've stated that maybe the company can do a better job of informing customers on the front end, hey, you need to plant these type of trees to, you know, to be located in a place that won't grow up in the power lines, or it won't grow tall enough to grow up in the power lines. So I know we do, do some of that, but maybe we can, you know, review that again and see what we could do about that. And it sounds like there is communication there between you two, and I think we need to maybe sit down and, and develop something going forward that, it sounds like for tree replacements, it's kind of have to be on an individual basis. I would think we can adopt something that's gonna work for every situation. So I think maybe for a certain situation, you know, one thing will work, another situation, something else can work. So we just have to, it just has to come down to communication that we need to do a better job with you all, and consequently, the customers need to do a better job with communication with us as far as what they, what they want, and I guess, so we can, because we want, we want customers to be, to be happy customers, and that, but we also, we got a business we want, and they're happy when their electric bills are low, so we can't just put everything underground or, or not, not trim trees. So we, we just need to, like I say, communicate better.
Question. Is, you just mentioned underground. Is there examples where you actually try putting things underground retroly throughout the city? I mean, I know that's an expense, but that was brought up during the East State Street widening. I know that was a discussion at that time.
Yeah, that's, that can be a very expensive proposition to do that. Once, you know, facilities are already in place, it's, it is very expensive to put them underground at that point. When new things are built, that's the time to do it. I think you can minimize the, it's, it's more expensive when you're building something, it's typically more expensive to, to put it underground, but it can be minimized, we can do it then rather than later.
Is there some, any place in your company, AEP entirely, that you actually have a program to, to retrofit underground lines? The reason why I say that is because if you're gonna have to go back every couple of years and trim trees, that's, that's an ongoing cost too. I mean, you say the initial cost would be varying lines, afterwards, costs would be not having to have crews out there cutting trees.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how the measure is, that's why I'm asking the question, that's all. It's no real...
And I think that, you know, what happens when we actually cut down a tree instead of trimming it, it is more expensive to, to cut down a tree than, than to trim it, but we figure if we can cut it down, you know, we'll spend more now, but overlap, long run, we don't want to come back to do it. As far as putting, putting something, facilities underground, my experience with the company I was with before, there was some, like for urban renewal, possibly the, the city would get a grant or something like that, to pay for something like that, but I'm not aware of the company doing that on a wholesale basis to place a lot of facilities underground. I'm not sure if AEP, people who's been with AEP a while, I doubt that there's been any situation like that. It would be unusual.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir.
Earlier in the discussion, Councilmember Patterson asked about an outage, how, how long is the outage before it's actually counted as being at least five minutes? And there was some discussion of the, the concept of more short-term outages are better than few longer-term outages. And given the experience of Casa Nuueva, certainly, in, in our experience, in my business also, long-term outages have their severe disadvantages, but frequent short-term outages for a small business are also more than just inconvenient with resetting clocks, but as we all move into the electronic age and have to, have to install computers and digital phones to keep up with, with technology, those three to five, or 15-second interruptions to five minutes can interrupt communications for a much longer time. And the gentleman mentioned that there's some thought being given to that concept, and I wondered what that thought might be.
Would you like to talk about that a little bit?
Quickly, yes.
Okay. Yeah, the, ideally, we would prefer there not be any kind of interruption. We do, our strategy for protection does involve, basically says it's better to have a momentary interruption than an extended interruption. We design our protection so that if something, if there's a problem on a line, the first thing that happens is you have the momentary, you open, you de-energize, you re-energize, because like I said before, 90-plus percent of the time, that clears the problem.
And that's literally just a few seconds?
Uh, I think you're talking two seconds, three seconds, something like that. But it's enough, it interrupts. I mean, if you've got digital electronics, it, it shuts them down. And that strategy was developed probably prior to digital electronics. But that is our, our strategy. Now, I can tell you that there's a lot of emphasis on taking a look at that right now. We, right now, we only monitor some of our system to know when that happens. For example, the circuit breaker that we talked about, the station breaker that I talked about before, we typically monitor those, have telemetry on them, we know when they operate. And when one of those operates, if we don't know why, like a thunderstorm or something like that, we routinely go out and patrol it. We have some equipment that helps us identify problems, and we try to go out and find out what causes it and fixes it. The reclosures that I talked about, that we have out on the lines, the second line of defense, typically, we do not have telemetry on them. And customer calls, customer feedback tells us if one of those operate. We do some, we do monitor those and look at counters on them, and we know, we can pick up if they've been operating a lot, but it's not real time. So there's some discussion, discussion moving forward about we need to change that. And we are experimenting with meters that actually go on customers' properties, a billing revenue meter, but it also has some telemetry in it to tell us when those type of operations occur. So moving forward, we know from feedback from our customers that that is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And moving forward, I, I see that we will probably become better at proactively addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Well, I guess just a question for council members about, you know, looking at the ordinance related to the franchise, and thinking about in section three, where it talks about leaving the streets, alleys, and other public places where such work is done in as good condition or repair as they were before the work began, whether we might ask the tree commission to come up with some language about the ANSI standards and about the potential for increased hazard from the trees being less structurally sound? Something that we might be able to amend this to, you know, refer to those recommendations? If the tree commission brings us some suggested language?
Okay, I'll talk to the tree commission, get some audio. Okay, and I'll also talk to the larger, and see what we have to do about that. Anything else? Want to end up? Okay. It's longer than I thought. I don't know if you have a copy of the ordinance from 86 to, did I give you a copy? Okay. This is section three we're talking about, I'm remembering it. And this is really the agreement for use of the right of way to prune and trim.
This is the current franchise agreement?
Yes.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. I think all we're talking about is putting something in about following the standards, so not really we're changing this substance, the idea is that everybody knows that you have.
We'll, we'll ask our people to take a look at your recommendation.
Okay.
We're glad to do that. In, in closing, we hope we've addressed all your questions tonight, and we would like to keep the communications open, continue to keep them open, and perhaps expand them. We'd like to deal or work with council or committees of your choice, or however you want to do it, in order to maybe try to identify load, load issues. At this point, we hope we've, we've satisfied you, at least at this stage, and hopefully keep the communications open in the future, and be able to address these issues as, as time goes by to your satisfaction, hopefully.
Okay, so, thank you.
So we, we can be assured that you will go along with the addition of those standards, at least consider it, right?
Well, we'll at least consider it. I'll, I'll, we'll show it to our folks.
And the arborist on the truck are maybe pushing the envelope too far? But, I mean, instead of the usual compliment of workers that are on those trucks?
Perhaps.
I mean, for some of us, those trees in our front yards are really very important. I mean, it's hard, for you, it's a nuisance, but for us, it's all kinds of different trees.
Do you have a tree in your yard?
Yeah, do you have a tree in your yard?
Yes, I have several.
Okay. Visualize and go on.
Erase those and think about them.
Quite frankly, I'm not familiar with changing a franchise midstream, so it's something we'll have to investigate, but we'll be glad to do that through here.
Okay. And I'm not sure we're trying to change it, I just think we're trying to...
I don't know the standard.
Conditions have changed since 86 in terms of what we...
For sure.
Aesthetics, I think.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, it was informative.
Thank you. Let's go, about two minutes to...
Two minutes to break, so you guys can actually take off if you need to.